People letting the fluffy cow. Ready, Daisy? Call this meeting back to order at 2:07. First item on the agenda in open session is budget workshop. We need our CFO for that. She back here now? A four-year-old does her own hair today. She did her hair at my boys' school.
She looks fantastic.
Oh, wow, that's a good girl.
Kathy just sent it to me. We're taking a four-year-old, a two-year-old to Riley next Thursday. Seven-hour drive.
That's nice knowing you.
It'll be awesome. We're taking Kelsey's two oldest up there for two days.
So while Mrs. Maraz is passing these out, what we're going to do today is we're going to talk about and discuss the proposed tax rate. I'm going to give you guys some information about the proposed tax rate and some different things we are proposing this year and why. Today, we'll be setting our proposed tax rate. And we are on a timeline right now because as we set that rate, then we get it published in the paper. It has to be published 10 days before we can set the rate and adopt the budget. And so today, there's no setting of things today. This is talking about proposals. And we put the proposed tax rate out today so that the community can look at it and give feedback on the August 19th meeting when we come together again. So, Ms. Maraz, we are at the budget workshops. If you want to begin your presentation.
So, as we let y'all know already, we're looking at two different possible tax rates. So, a few pages in here, I've broken them down on both rates, so y'all can see, compare each one. We'll just go to the projected revenues. And this is at what our MCR should be, and I'll get to that here in a minute. We won't get our official MCR until probably Monday, but multiple, so what we were preliminarily approved by TEA already. Also, what's the spreadsheet they put out, what's calculated. Everything is giving us a 68 point, or a .6855 MCR, plus our five pennies that we already have, so that's a .7355.
So, we're already using five of the golden pennies?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, our projected revenue with state, local, and federal at .7355 is the $21,321,002. If we were able to get a 7655 tax rate, that would give us additional funding of $1.78 million, and that would bring us up to $22,397,620. Now, I'll break down those numbers in a couple pages. So, right here on the summary of projected revenues, there's two separate pages. The first one is going to be at the six... Sorry. Yes. 55 rate, and then the next one is at this .7655 rate.
These are the two, these are each separate page?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, as you can see, state funding is, would be increased by $728,000, and local income would only be increased by close to $350,000 if we took the higher tax rate. On my projected revenues, of course, Schar's funding is down.
Which line am I looking at, Brittany?
Schar's funding is under federal funding, close to the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. This year, we budgeted $460. Next year, I'm only going to budget $260. We should take in a little under $260 this year. I'm looking at an ADA of $1750, since we ended last year with $1744. I feel that that's safe.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned. For my realtors, I'm a little concerned that we're not seeing, some people still trying to leave town, based on the number of houses I've seen. I think I'm fine with your number. I'm just trying to figure out if, I'm going to say that we probably ought to make a little bit sloppy on that because the stuff I'm seeing, guys, we still got families leaving town.
Right, right. Well, and our enrollment was quite a bit higher than that. It's just our ADA was...
Actual tenant.
Yeah, actual tenant.
Sick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's going to be, it'd be nice to know what, you know, by the end of September, what that number's going to be.
We can only know.
Yeah.
Otherwise, all other funding pretty much stays the same. I budgeted a little bit less on CD interest, just out of precaution if interest rates are going to drop. On the per capita funds, those are up, no matter what rate we use. Almost 230, no, 270 on state funding. So, that's helpful. Okay, we'll move on to our preliminary, or our certified values that came in. They're up from last year's by right at $70 million. And I don't actually use that number. I use a number that's a little bit lower. It's probably what the state will use. And so, mine was calculated at $1.178,817,542. And the rate that the state gave us, which is the page after that, theirs was off by[491.84][491.86]$9 to mine, so, and they've already approved that one.
Oh, $9, huh?
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
So, have you alerted them to their mistake?
Yes.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, okay.
Yeah. So, that's the number that I'm budgeting off of right now. And you can see the trend where our values have gone up for MNO.
Is the, you've got on your certified, yeah, these are certified, right? Certified?
Yes, sir.
Appraisal rolls, so you've got your market value, you've got your appraised value, and you've got the next debt taxable value. Is that all the, is this the circuit breakers and the homestead exemption and the ag deductions and everything rolled up in this? Is that what that is?
Yes, that's what that value is. This page is just another calculation that a calculator that TEA puts out to find your own MCR. And so, it's also telling me that it should be 6855, plus our five pennies.
TEA says the MCR, right?
Yes.
And it's per district?
Yes. And since they're not official till Monday for this purpose, I just wanted to show y'all. It should really be that.
No big surprises.
Hopefully. The next couple pages are Omar's template, broken down two ways. And I kind of highlighted the important numbers for y'all to see, which would be the tax, the two different tax rates that we could go with. And then, the INS rate at 26 cents instead of where we're currently at 29. Of course, there's not much difference from this year's budget to next year's budget on everything. Our transportation did increase. It doubled what we should be getting on our transportation allotment. That's because of our sped transportation and then our CTE transportation, transporting the welding students back and forth. Our INS hold harmless is up a little. And of course, that available school fund that I mentioned earlier, that one's up. So, once again, y'all can see the breakdown on the very bottom between the two, where if we did go for those extra three pennies, an extra $730 in state funding and an extra $350 in local.
When the state kicked their circuit breakers, then how much of an impact is that on the, the way I understood they did the circuit breakers in the, the way they were doing the budget before, we've got the circuit breakers on how much we can go up on tax revenues. The circuit breakers kicked in 60 million bucks, 73 million bucks, something like that.
I guess I'd have to look into that a little bit.
Okay.
Before I answer you directly.
Is that here?
That's on our budget. That will be on our budget.
Well, but I didn't know much of that circuit breaker stuff. It's in our account?
Yes, yeah.
Is it quite a few?
Oh, yeah. Well, it's, plus you could, you could roll up the homestead exemption there, I think, because we did an impact study for the homestead exemption increase, if I remember right.
Yes, I remember.
Ready?
All right, so expenses, keep in mind that people are still being hired, quitting, stipends are still moving around. This is kind of a moving target, but keeping it balanced should not be an issue. This first page after my page that says 24 versus 25 expenses compares this year's current adopted budget versus next year's. So, each of these have changed a little bit, decreased or increased some. Now, I'll walk y'all through kind of what happened on each one. Keep in mind, on the approved budget, it does have that retention stipend from the fall. So, it may look like something decreased a significant amount, but it's $1,000 per employee, plus benefits on top of that. So, really didn't decrease as much as what it looks like, I guess. In function 11, we absorbed the four ESSR positions. We took roughly 25 employees from being a, the uncertified employees from making $35,000, took them up to $38,000, so there's $75,000 right there. Our 313s, our IDAB funds have decreased, what they're passing on to the districts. And so, I had to cut a position out of those funds and put them into 199. Something that helped is no more IXL. That was 40 grand a year. Also, we had a few veteran teachers leave, and we're replacing them with uncertified. That's 20 grand of switch right there. We moved an SEL off of function 11 into guidance counselor. That's a whole position. Cut a handful of paras, and then also moved back into this function. A librarian had to replace them with what we call a media specialist. So, that, all of those fluctuations equal that $125,000 in instruction. On library, like I said, we replaced that one. Curriculum and instruction, when the ESSA amounts carry over, this one will pretty much equal out. On school leadership, we added an additional administrator, but I cut a lot of unused lines out of that one.
What's an unused line?
Or reduced them by where they had a lot of fluff.
Supplies and, at the end of the year, we had 50% of our funds left.
Balanced budget.
Make it work.
Yes. Student transportation, I know it looks like we're taking it out, a lot out of there, but we had budgeted $70,000 per storm room for the repairing after the storm. We don't need to have that in the next one. The retention stipend also. And then, reclassified transportation, so since I took it out of other functions, I have to decrease reclassified transportation in this function as well.
The things you're taking out, Brittany, we can, you're comfortable we can make those work. The funds you're taking out of each of these categories, okay?
Oh, yes. I didn't take off anything that was used yearly. It was, the past two years it had been used, but we kept budgeting for it.
You remember, you and I had a conversation about who was going to get lynched last time?
Slightly, remember, yeah.
He'll remind you.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, well, I think I was on the list too, so be careful.
Okay, facilities, maintenance, and operations, that one's down. Of course, the retention stipend, they didn't ask for another gator this year. There was some door projects in there I'm able to take out, because if we do need to replace doors, we can use safety money at this time. There was the gutter replacement at the alternative school, and then those couple of projects at the Kinder that made up all of that, and so was able to reduce that. The only other one that is up would be our payments to the SSA, which they had some salary increases to keep up and keep their people that were necessary, that that board felt was necessary. So, we needed to, I think we're 56% funding the SSA right now. And then, if you compare the balance budget sheet to the next one, you'll see that the increase in, if we're able to go with that other, with the increased tax rate, the $1,076 in function 81, I would propose that we put it there until the election, so that we have a clear picture in all the other functions of what's actually going on, and it doesn't skew the numbers either way.
So, this might be a good time for me to, you know, and explain some of what we're proposing. So, Ms. Maraz has been talking about possibly, possibly increasing the MNO tax rate. Let me, let me begin, well, let me begin by talking about some of our needs in the district. So, it's been pretty apparent since, since I've been here and things that you guys have talked to me and that I've heard community members and you guys say in the community, that we, we have two issues that, or two problems that have been identified as challenges for, for Perryton. One of them is teacher salary, that our salaries are not competing with other districts around. And that hurts us when it comes to recruiting teachers to our district. It also hurts us when it comes to retaining teachers in our district, two things that are priorities for every district, but especially for us living in a rural community. The other is our aging bus fleet, and it is apparent that we need to begin replacing some of our buses and our vehicles. And so, we've been looking at our budget throughout the course of this year to, to find ways to do that, and we keep working on that. But just to highlight at least one of these problems, I did a comparison of school districts around the area, and these are, these are 16 school districts, 15 other school districts that I just could pull off their, their website, what their teacher salary is, and compared it to ours. And as you can see, if you look up on my, on my chart, any red number, we are behind that district in, in salary. Any blue number, we're ahead of that district in salary. Of the 112 numbers on this chart, there are nine of them that are blue. We, across the bottom, I've ranked us in salary on, on those 16 districts. So, we start out ranked 12th. We go to 13th at year five, or step 10. At step 10, 15, 20, those we are in the bottom of the 16 districts. Then, we move up ahead to 15th, almost the bottom, for the next two steps, step 25 and 30. And the only one, the only reason that is because Dalhart freezes their salary at 20 years. So, this includes Borger, Canadian Children's, Dalhart, Demet, Dumas, Groover, Hereford, Highland Park, Levelland, Miami, Pampa, River Road, Spearman. These are districts that are our size, maybe a little bit smaller. Nothing really, there's, I don't think there are any, well, we do have Canyon in there. There's, you know, some of the larger districts, but many of these districts are our size. And this is where we rank in our staff salary. And I, I can tell you that this is an issue that comes, that we come up against when we're recruiting. I, there are at least several conversations that I've had with potential teachers this year. One in particular, who, who initially, when, when I was approaching him about coming to the district, commented on how low our salaries are, and it becomes an obstacle for us recruiting. So, here is, here is what I propose, I'd like to take some action on this. And what I'd like to propose us to, to address some of our salary concerns, well, let me, let me summarize it. I'd like to propose that we address some of our salaries concerns and give us some room to buy a bus. That's going to take an increase of our MNO taxes, but in our plan, it doesn't increase our total tax rate. So, in other words, our plan has us paying the same tax, tax rate this next year as we did the previous year. So, a quick summary or a quick, a quick lesson on school finance. There are two buckets of money that schools can apply taxes to. The first bucket is the MNO, or maintenance and operation. That bucket can be used for salaries, for supplies, and for equipment. So, you can pay teachers out of that. You can also buy buses. The second is INS, and that's, that is for bond payments or indebtedness. That money can only be used to pay off our debts. So, in all, in each one of our tax rates, like this is our current tax rate that we had during this school year, we had 73 cents that was in our tax rate for MNO, and we had 29 cents that was in our tax rate for INS. So, those tax rates are each going to those buckets of money, and our total tax rate was a dollar and two approximately. There's some little, there's some little points on that, but we're just going to keep things rounded off for the, for the focus of this presentation.
INS includes the bond approval that we made.
Yes.
Community-approved bond.
Correct. The INS is what we were using to pay off earlier bonds and our most recent bond two years ago. And if you remember, after the tornado, we even reduced that just a little bit in deference to our community and what we were going through. So, we, we had originally said that we were going to have 32 cents as a tax rate. We reduced that a little bit to, to help out our community moving into the tornado. But that's what's used to pay off our bonds. And neither bucket can be used for either thing. You cannot use INS money to pay for salaries. You cannot use MNO money to pay for bonds. So, the debt service rate, or the INS rate, the money that's used to pay off bonds, last year, when we sold the $40 million bonds that the community approved us to sell, we only sold 25 million, and that was under the advice of our financial advisor and current interest rates. We felt it would be better for the district to hold back 15 million of those bonds and not sell them, and look for interest rates to change, which would put us in a better position later on to sell those bonds, and it would be better for our district. But because we did not sell those $15 million of, of bond, that gives us the option to reduce the INS rate a little bit this year, because we don't have to have that full INS rate to pay off all the 40 million, since not all 40 million bonds were sold. So, my proposal is this. I'd like to take 3 cents of that buffer, if you will, of our INS tax rate, and I'd like to move it over to our MNO tax rate. That will make our MNO tax, our proposal is that our MNO tax rate is 76 cents, and our INS tax rate would be 26 cents. Now, that still is the same dollar and two cents that we paid last year. So, we would be moving, really, from money from one bucket to another, but the size of the buckets are not going to increase, okay?
Total size.
Total size, total size of the buckets will not increase. So, we're still at a dollar and two. Now, the 3 cents that we would be adding into MNO tax are called golden pennies. So, you may ask, what's a golden penny? A golden penny is a penny of tax that is supplemented by the state with additional funding. In other words, the, the state will take that penny that we tax, and they will give us basically two to one. So, the penny that is applied to our tax rate locally will gain us a little over $100,000 of local funds, local tax money. But the state, when we, when we do that, will say, for that $100,000, we're going to give you $200,000 in funding. So, it ends up being about $300,000, even though the community is only paying $100,000 of it. So, that's the, that's why they're called golden pennies, is because there is additional funding that comes from the state whenever we apply those.
And that yields Brittany's $1,021, or whatever it is.
Correct. And that's, that's why the penny of tax that we, or the pennies, three pennies that we're talking about, will yield about a million dollars in extra funding for us.
The state will keep giving us?
Yes.
Forever.
Yes.
It doesn't run out?
No, it doesn't.
And it's not subject to recapture.
And it's not subject to recapture either. So, the state limits how much we can tax. The first nine pennies off, they have a maximum compressed tax rate, and the first nine pennies above that rate are golden pennies, or excuse me, eight pennies. Eight pennies are golden pennies. After that, there's still nine pennies that we could go out and tax for, but they're called copper pennies, because the only money you get for those is what you get locally. So, the copper pennies will only yield Perryton ISD about $100,000 in funding. But the golden pennies, each one of those gets us a little over $300,000 per, per penny. So, right now, in our tax rate, in the dollar and two that we paid last year, there are five golden pennies. We have five golden pennies in that tax rate. What we're proposing is that we take the last three in our new tax rate. Now, if we take those last three, that raises us an additional about $1 million in funding. So, what would that $1 million be used for? It'll be used, oops, excuse me, back one up. It'll be used for staff raises, to give raises to our staff, our certified staff, our teachers, and also to our non-certified staff, our custodians, our maintenance crew, our paraprofessionals, our office workers. I would propose with that $1 million, that with $3,000 be added to every step for teachers, and a 5% raise for our non-certified custodial support staff transportation. At this point, administrators are not included in our proposal. This would strictly be for our teachers and our non-certified staff. And with that, that leaves us a little bit of money, about $250,000, $300,000, that we could use to buy buses, to buy transportation. That would probably get us at least one bus for, for the next year. So, what does it take to make that happen? Well, because we are raising the three pennies on our MNO rate, even though we're not raising the total tax rate, because we would apply, be applying it to the MNO rate, we have to hold an election, because the community has to agree. The election is called a voter-approved tax rate election, or called a VADER. That election would happen in November, and the community would have to approve our tax rate. And they would have to affirm that it is okay for us to, to get those three golden pennies and get the $1 million in revenue to pay staff. and get the $1 million in revenue to pay staff and to buy buses. Now, one of the reasons we'd like to do this this year is normally when you do this, you have to do an efficiency audit by statute. The law requires that you do an efficiency audit. An efficiency audit costs districts about $10,000 to $25,000, maybe even more. But, because Oakley Tree County is in a disaster declaration zone, based on our tornado a year and a half ago, or a little over a year ago, we don't, we are excluded from that requirement this year. So we don't have to spend that extra $10,000 to $25,000 to do the efficiency audit in order to ask for a VADER. You also have to pass your budget in August now, assuming that the VADER will pass. Now, even though we will be passing that budget, we will be very frugal on our spending, and we won't, we won't spend money we don't have yet. How we end this year will depend on if the VADER passes in November.
And you're going to cover those options, Greg, on what happens? The difference between if the, if the VADER passes versus what doesn't?
Yes. So if the VADER passes in November, if the VADER passes, we will be able to raise the, raise the pay for our staff next year. We'll be able to get ready to purchase a bus, and we'll continue on through the year, based on the budget that we approve here in August.
So next year is 2024 through 2025 school year?
Yes.
Or we'll get the raise that year?
No, this, this will be, we won't pay based on the raise until the VADER passes.
Until November.
Yes, until the VADER passes.
Perfect. Because next year, this year, school year is.
Right, yes. So, but, what happens if the VADER doesn't pass? If the VADER doesn't pass, the board has to meet immediately, and we will pass a budget that is based on the tax rate that, it's based on our normal tax rate that we would be looking at right now. It would still be the dollar two. That tax rate wouldn't change, because we would propose that the buffer that's in the INS tax rate stay in INS, and we use the money that is generated from the INS tax rate and use it to pay off our debts early. We will, so that's, the, the tax rate will still stay about at the dollar two. So some other factors to consider, many districts in the state of Texas, you can read the headlines, just do a quick search on Texas, many districts are adopting deficit budgets because of the budget situation that school districts are in. When I, there was a brief survey that was sent out, and in the region 16, not everybody answered, but 23 of the people that did said they were doing, they were going to have deficit budgets. Seven said no, and three were not sure. So this, this, the funding that we're struggling with right now is not unusual to us, but we do want to take action locally to try to address it. So other factors to consider, that we're behind districts our size in, and we'll continue to fall behind in staff salary, and recruiting to our location, like I said, has become difficult. If I take those, the chart that I showed you earlier, and I apply our VADER to it, and I apply our new salary structure, this is the chart that shows the nine numbers, nine blue numbers out of 112. This is what happens when we apply our new salary based on the VADER. You notice there's a lot more blue. We actually become ahead of many districts. Now, we don't become the top of the heap, but we, we make a fair step into the middle.
But we compete with the one closest to us.
Yes, we begin to compete.
These are places also where your cost of living is very, should be very similar, I think, too.
Correct. So you can look across the bottom, and you remember, most of those were 15 and 16. Now we're 10th, 11th, 11th, 9th, 9th, 10th, 10th. So we've, so we've stepped into the middle of the pack. Not where we'd love to be, we'd all dream to be at the top. But this, this gives us a fair step into the, into the problem. And also, if you notice the highlighted number, just want to point this out. The highlighted numbers are where we're within just a couple of hundred. So, so it's almost, I would consider equal, rather than behind.
Especially with Canadian, my God.
And my biggest point to make is that having good teachers, and having good buses for our kids, having a healthy school district that is able to recruit and retain, retain good teachers helps our community to thrive. It prepares our students for their future. It gives them a solid foundation. And salary right now is, has become an obstacle in us recruiting and retaining. So, just to warn you, this is what the ballot language, the sample ballot language, we are required by statute to, when we put this on the, on the ballot, this is the language that we were required by law to use. So you would vote for or against, a vote for would be to affirm the VADER, and it would allow us to generate the new revenue. Ratifying the ad valorem tax rate of a dollar and two in Perryton ISD for the current year, a rate that will result in an increase of 4.7% in maintenance and operations tax revenue for the district for the current year as compared to the preceding year, which is an additional $1,027,315.
Can we say anything about golden pennies, or that it's matched by the state, or anything in there?
Not on the ballot.
Not on the ballot.
Not on the ballot.
Not on the ballot, so the INS statement would be gone there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it is all about selling it.
Yeah. So if you look at, if you look at what this looks like, on the left, it's our previous year's tax rate, on the right is our proposal. We are simply taking three cents out of one bucket, putting it in another that'll allow us to pay our staff. This is a quick chart that we've put up that looks at the years, because what, the question is going to be, what happens in the future? What happens when we sell the $15 million with the bond? We've explored that option. We don't think we're going to have to raise our rates in order to pay off, even when we sell the $15 million. We won't, we, this shows a pretty level, little, pretty level payout plan. And one other chart, just want to throw in here at the end, this is our tax rate, that our historical tax rate, starting from 2006. And you can see, the tax rates for the school districts have declined through the years. That is our, that's our tax rate right now, and it's one of the reasons, because they're declining, and the state's requiring us to decline, that does put us in a, in a tightening situation.
By 50%, it's coming down 50 cents.
So with that being said, I would, I will commit to the community that if, if this passes, those are the, those are the things, salaries, paying staff and buses are what we're going to use the money for. It is something that the, the tax will continue, will be able to go some years in the future, paying our staff that rate. And I will be trying to get information to our community so that they understand what we're, what we're proposing. To put it all in a, in a quick summary, we want to move three cents from our INS to our MNO tax rate. In order to do that, the community has to vote to approve that, but that's going to allow us to give our staff raises and for us to buy buses. And I welcome any questions that you might have.
I might add something to that. People are probably going to get tired of hearing me say this, but this is my, this is my mindset and my presentation to folks that have a question about, about this process. Once you get on school board, you're going to spend your first two or three years just trying to figure out school finance, because it's crazy. It's different than anything you ever want to see in the business world. When I look at this VADER, the, by, by simply moving those three cents from one bucket to another, not changing the net tax to any property owner in the appraisal district, in PISD, the community spending, spending $300,000 on one side, it comes back on the other, so it's still a net zero. But by moving that $300,000 to another bucket, returns us nearly a million dollars. Now, in my mind, that's crazy, but that's school finance. That's how it goes through. And this is a, is a process that I will admit, when Mr. Brown brought it to me in the first place, I was a little apprehensive. I wanted to hear some details, I wanted to hear what the actual process was on, on how it flowed through. And I'm here to tell you, I can't poke a hole in this. I mean, for, for those that are watching this, I can't see a downside for the community from changing the buckets that these dollars go into, because it doesn't change anything. If you see an increase in your taxes on your property, it's not because the school has increased your tax rate because of this. It's because one of two things has happened, either another entity has changed their rate, or your property valuation has changed. To me, this is, is something that the community really needs to get behind, and as a board, we need to spend a lot of time shaking bushes to really, really let people know how this works. The wording that we saw on the screen is crazy bad, that we've got to get around that to be able to promote that this is, is no change to anyone's tax rate. But by making no change, just moving it from one category to another, creates an opportunity for the district to, to, to work on one of the things that if I could go back to the election, what's one of the number one things we heard about? Was teacher retention. And if we're 15th and 16th out of 15 or 16 schools, we're going to have a hard time retaining our good teachers.
Well, our teachers deserve better, Wes, and our, our students deserve better. Traveling on our buses, our bus drivers deserve better driving those buses. And our maintenance department, the bus department deserves better, so.
Absolutely, so, that was my comment. Thank you, thank you.
So this is an education.
Yeah, let me say this.
Plan, not a, we're not trying to sell anything, we're just trying to explain something.
Well, there's a couple considerations, and one that is the way that we structured, the way that these elections have moved into November, the odds are heavily stacked against it at times.
Yes, they are.
But I'll say this, and I tend to be pretty tight on this stuff, but, I don't, I do not see this as a deficit budget, because we're just rebalancing things. And I think we've been saying for the last couple of years, since we went through COVID, that we've, we've got to do something about cost of living adjustments for our staff, and that we haven't been able to do that as much as we wanted to, we haven't been able to do that. So I, I don't see this as I normally would deficit budget. I don't want to, I don't want to join, I'll say this bluntly, I don't want to join in village idiots convention with other districts that run deficit budgets repeatedly, but that's not what I see here. So I, I think the, I think it's a matter of properly selling it, because, man, I'm telling you, when you're going down on a general ballot and looking at these things, this is where they usually just go, just go and no.
Right.
So it's going to be, it's going, that's going to, it's going to take some, some sales here.
Yes.
But I don't see this as deficit budget, otherwise I would have a major problem with it.
And this is the last year we can do it, about the efficiency audit.
Correct. If we, if we wait until the next year, we have to spend the $10,000 to $25,000 to do the efficiency audit. And, you know, just to, and to, to, we have been looking through our budget over the course of the year. We've already made some changes and some cuts based on students being here or not being here. Built into this budget is a little bit of money for us, for me to hire a, a service that will come in and study our staff to make sure that we are not overstaffed or understaffed in a certain area. So we want to use this money, if, if the community allows us to do this, we want to use it wisely. We want to be good stewards of it. We want to have the staffing that we need, but no more than we need. And so, we're going to be doing our part to make sure that we're trying to be good stewards of our tax money.
Well, we have, I feel like the school district has done that for the last few years. As Wes has pointed out earlier, it's every time we get a compression of what we provide for a tax cut, basically, and the school taxes have been eaten up by other entities, which shall remain nameless, but they're out there.
Their friends are on them, and we're jealous they get to do it on their own. We get told what to do in the state, by the state. 50 cents since 2006 that our tax rate has compressed.
So I posed the question to Brittany, because this is Wes's comment on the Byzantium rules on school finance, and I always, I always think the art of the rules are to understand, because they're trying to get away from something, but I've got my tinfoil hat here. The circuit breakers that are built in for maximum, for maximum tax increase, do you know what the, and I'll give you time, guys, to look at this, but I would like to know what, when do those expire? Because typically in the school system, we tend to make permanent changes in our expenses, and sometimes we don't get, and most of this is due to the state, I'll say it that way. But we don't cover it with revenues. Now, Brittany's done a good job, I think, with what we, yeah, with making everything work here. So I think that, I think that's good. But do you know anything about these circuit breakers, the way they kick in? I thought they were time limited.
Are you talking about the maximum that a school district can tax?
Well, I'm talking about where you get, where you get a certain amount of tax. The way I understand, and again, this may, this may be fault on mine, but the way I understand circuit breakers, you can only increase taxes a certain amount. I thought that was put in some of the legislation, and that's capping us right now from where minerals would be evaluated, where houses will be evaluated. So, and the number this year was 60, 70 million dollars on our total appraised tax base.
Okay. So. So you're talking about the appraisal, like a property appraisal?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, when those kick, when those caps kick off, there is another tax increase coming here, simply between that.
Value, not value, yeah, I'm sorry, value, thank you.
Tax values.
Yeah. So the values, but that will come, of course, it will come with a tax increase.
Right, because the values go up.
Correct. Not that we're raising.
Yeah, so it's like your, your home sit exemption and titles, you can only go up 10,000, or 10% a year. So if it's not your home.
Then they have a circuit breaker, you can only go up someone.
They added a circuit breaker to other things, so that they couldn't skyrocket with the property values.
Well, what kills us, what kills us in Perryton is, and has forever, is we're tied to these commodity markets. And so you, we end up going from very big surplus budgets to very, then the very next year, you're thinking we're going to have to riff people.
Feast or famine.
And I went, and we talked about this a little bit during, during some of the election discussions, but we've got to figure some way to stabilize our revenue base. This is a longer term problem, because this one's not going away. I didn't hear you say, my other favorite subject was, we need to put some money toward recruiting and how we go at that, so I'll throw that little one at you.
Nobody, well, we can keep trying, but we went, and there.
I can't, I can't accept a no, Sarah, that's not a good answer.
Growing your own might be a good strategy to focus on.
It's a good partial strategy, yes.
As, as we work through this, there may be a little bit of money on the top that, that could be used for some, for some recruiting strategies.
Okay.
Depending on the.
I appreciate that, so.
Yeah. Depending on, once it all shakes out with our rates and with the appraisal values, there may be a little bit of additional money on the top that we could put to something like that.
So to reemphasize what you said in the end of your presentation, we will be very, very conservative until we see what comes out of the vote.
Yes. Thank you. I, yes.
Brittany, you have more pages.
I do. I'll make one quick. The, so even, either way we go, it's like 6,200 through 6,400. So those are like your supplies, your services, everything but payroll will stay at about 24% of the budget, and then payroll's still at 76% of the budget, either way.
Change to us with Patreon.
Sorry, I didn't put page numbers, the one that looks like this.
There we go. It works. Okay, fine.
So that first page just shows you the balanced budget as is. And the next one says a quote unquote, unbalanced budget. I, believe me, I don't want an unbalanced budget either. That's why I put it like that. And that just shows the $1,076 put into function 81, where nobody's going to touch it.
Good.
And I'll let it sit there till the voters decide.
Yeah, I think that's, so you and I both don't have to go out with the microphone and say, is what we did.
Yes.
There'll be a lot of information.
And the reports will stay consistent to what y'all are used to seeing, and we don't have to say, oh yeah, in that function, there's this. It'll just be cleaner. Interest and sinking fund, that shows you what our last reported current debt was, what's still outstanding on the bond principles with a 26, with all this talk proposing a 26% or 20, I put percent.
26 cents.
Yeah, take that percent off there, everybody, I don't.
We need one.
Yeah. So that'll cover our debt service payments, and if there's just a touch extra, then it will go towards early repayment of debt. We can carry a year in that fund, and then if we get more than what a year is, then y'all will have to do a little thing in here, and it's, it's rolling over. do a little thing in here and it's, it's really hard. Cafeteria fund, I would like to brag on them a little bit. Their total expenses are going down right around two hundred thousand dollars from last year. I challenge them to not hire positions if, when they let go of somebody. So they're truly practicing attrition, as I keep preaching. And so their budget's going down thirteen percent. And they'll still make ends meet.
Beating their heads.
Exactly.
Yes, they are.
Good job cafeteria ladies.
And their balance budget.
So are we looking for a motion?
There is some motion language when we get there.
There is when we, but not yet.
Okay, you got more pages?
Oh, those are for agenda items.
Perfect.
Okay, we've got a couple of things to do on discussion, discussion or action items before we get to setting the proposed tax rate. First thing, consideration of possible action on student transfer applications. You have those applications in front of you.
We don't see any problems with these applications. And so we're recommending to you, there's, there's employee children in there. None of these are concerns for us. We recommend approval.
Are you going to handle this as a group?
As a group, unless you would like them split up.
I would make the motion as a group to approve this list.
Your second?
Second.
Move the second to approve the list as presented for transfer applications. Any additional discussion? All in favor? I all opposed. Motion carries six oh. Next item on the agenda, deliberation of possible action to adopt a proposed tax rate based on certified taxable values for truth and taxation application. I bet you that was worded that way, because legally we had to.
Mm hmm. That's correct.
So that would, I would assume be this page?
Yeah. And that page, the appraisal district puts together for us.
Yeah, and they put it in paper.
Because they have a few more numbers that I don't.
So Ms. Maraz, if, if we were to, if we were going to drop a tax rate that did not include the Vader, what would that tax rate be?
Would be point seven three five five.
Okay. And with the Vader?
Point seven six five five.
That's three times one golden penny, is it?
Yes.
Don't complicate it.
You're so good, Amanda. I need to be in banking.
So anybody that wants, i- i- if you, when you do make a motion, you can choose one of those rates to fill in that blank.
I move that we adopt a proposed tax rate of point seven six five five based on certified taxable property values in the district. And that we authorize the superintendent to take all action necessary to ensure that the appropriate truth and taxation notices are filed and hearings held as a result of our adoption of this proposed tax rate.
Second.
Move the second to that. To adopt a proposed tax rate. Let me, let me Reader's Digest at this version of this. It's moved a second to adopt a proposed tax rate of point seven six five five. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six zero at seventy six fifty five.
Thank you all. It's going to put a lot of work on our plates for a while, and that's okay. It'll be very appreciated. Just one point of clarification, this does not call the election. That will happen on the nineteenth, when we get together and actually officially adopt the tax rate. This is the proposed tax rate.
Proposed. Next item, deliberation and possible action to set board meeting date for the public hearing on the twenty four, twenty five budget and proposed tax rate. That would be the nineteenth.
That would be, our next regular meeting is August nineteenth.
But we need a motion to affirm that.
But we need a motion to affirm that, because that sets it as the public hearing.
So.
Second. Move the second to set August the nineteenth as the date for the official public hearing on the twenty four, twenty five budget proposed tax rate. Any additional discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Six zero, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the CFO as delegate to calculate the district's no new revenue rate.
Uh, this, this allows Brittany to, to do her job. She just needs your authorization.
Does anyone want to volunteer?
Does anyone want to volunteer to do Brittany's job?
She can have all that she wants.
It's removed and segmented to prove Brittany Maraz as the delegate to calculate the district's no new revenue rate. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. You're unanimous, my friend.
The next item I'd like to table until the next meeting, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Shing gone. Consideration of possible approval of insurance contract twenty four, twenty five. And we have a handout from Insureka. What does this mean?
Don't let him know.
Oh, yeah. It means, as, as you guys know, insurance rates continue to rise. And it's not just us, it's everybody, and it's in your, it's your house, it's your, well, cars actually rates went down a little bit. But it's, it's anything that has to do with property and anything that can be weather related, it's going up. And it's going up considerably. The reinsurance market is incredibly volatile. And so insurance companies are having to, to navigate a very difficult situation. I keep getting told by insurance people who, who know that it'll eventually even out. It'll eventually stabilize, but it's pretty volatile still. So Ms. Maraz, do you have any comments or, or Mr. BA question?
No comments. We all know it's terrible.
After what we've been through the last couple of years, it's hard to find mercy in my soul for the insurance company.
Yeah, I understand.
But complaining about it is not going to fix it.
The biggest changes to note are that we went from a one percent deductible to a two percent deductible. That wasn't our choice. It was mandatory by the insurer. And the premiums went up a hundred thousand dollars again.
How much of an increase percentage wise, how much of an increase was that?
Uh, like twenty percent.
Wow.
Twenty percent increase and go from a one percent to two percent.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It was less than last year. Last year went one hundred and seventy.
Yeah. So is there any, on these, any discounts? Or if we have a monitoring system in the schools for water damage, any of that? Because I know houses are getting to where like, if you have a monitoring system or a security system or whatever.
Right. Um, knocked down.
But.
I don't know that I've seen that. The only, if we wanted our premium to go down by roughly five thousand dollars, they could put us at a three percent deductible.
No, no, whatever, cool.
That was about the only difference.
But thanks for asking.
I am surprised that cyber loss and liability is a million dollar limit. We have not found anything with that size of limit. So I'm, I'm surprised at the size of it. If there was one good thing on here, for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, that's pretty good coverage on that. So maybe there's just not a lot of, of loss experience there that's within school districts in general that's, that's jumping up.
The interesting thing is that was a premium that went down a little bit.
That is very, very surprising. Because I know what ours at equity is, is less than that per coverage, and it's more expensive than that.
Maybe it was real loss, based on real losses rather than wannabe losses.
Yeah, we, like I said, we may not have the experience ratio in education that you have in industry, that, that that's causing the difference. I just, I just say that because it jumped out. Everything else is, is insurance, whatever.
And this, this includes on here, line three from the bottom is our educator's legal liability that are legal policy limit that we were asking about earlier.
Yes.
Educator's legal liability. Claims made and reported.
Yes.
And we, and we, for my marketing question, did we, we did shop for providers?
We.
Whoever's out there.
We can.
The two, the two big providers of school district insurance is the one we have, then Tasby. We have, we've not, Tasby Risk Management.
They're my favorite.
I know.
You would love it.
Listen, have a big check every year or two.
But that is something that they.
We did not shop, we did not, we already have a relationship with them. We didn't check Tasby's rates. I can, I can tell you that they're fairly similar. We may, we may want to take a look at them. Yeah. We may look at them this next year.
But that's what they always say, the big old benefit of being part of it and all that.
I don't usually quote, I don't usually quote Tasby.
I wouldn't quote, I was just saying, they say.
I think we'll look at it this year just for Richard.
Come to a conference with us, it's fine. It's educational, you might learn something.
I think it's, I think as long as you're, you have a feel for it. I mean, normally I would bid everything, but if you're limited here, I know the way, while you look what's going on forward in California right now.
Yes.
Yes.
Glad they still insure buildings, thank you very much.
There are many companies that are backing out of Texas wholeheartedly.
Oh, yeah.
Are not insuring Texas at all.
And you better not let your coverage lapse, or you'll never get any again. So, so do we need a motion to approve possible insurance contract?
We do.
Or sorry, it's not possible, okay. Motion to approve insurance contract for twenty, twenty four, twenty five. Fight the bullet, come on.
Your second?
Do we have?
I'm already initiated, stop that.
Okay, wait back up a second. Do we ever have any viable options? I mean, I mean, everybody says it in here.
Not at this time.
Yeah, well, I'd like to look at it as a way to punish the insurance industry, but I can't. But it doesn't look like we can do it.
It's a gotta have. I was a little, I mean, go to motion in a second and discussion. I'm assuming when I look at the limit on equipment breakdown at a hundred million dollars per accident, that seems an oddly strong number.
Compared to everything else.
Yeah. But I'm assuming it's going against our total property value of a hundred and twenty six million dollars. Equipment breakdown, it's really only sixty seven hundred and nine dollars worth of a premium cost on that, which is a bizarre disparity in premium versus coverage.
It probably doesn't cover what we need to cover.
So I guess I was asking if that maybe even was a misprint. It's actually a million dollar, but that's on the contract, we've got a hundred million dollar coverage for sixty seven hundred dollars. Any other discussion?
Just make sure they sign that too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Make sure that's a lot of zeros on there. All in favor? Oppose? Motion reluctantly carries six oh.
There you go.
Please add a vote.
Fine. We all said fine.
Last item, consideration of possible approval, authorize superintendent to approve end of year budget amendments.
The, the end of the year budget amendments are basically cleanup amendments. Most of the time, it's just to add money from one function to another in case we get bills in that function past the September first deadline. You guys have access to, to the information. You'll have access to the money that's being moved, so that you can see it. But it's mainly to clean things up for audit. And it, it keeps the process moving along to, if I can authorize that, rather than have to wait for an next meeting.
What kind of dollars do we talk about, are you thinking this year?
I don't, first, I checked before we came in here. I don't, I really don't think we're going to have any end of the year budget amendments.
Is this for this year or moving on?
This would just be for this, this year. After, after August thirty first, when we look at it, if we have to move something from one function to another to make sure we have all the bills that could come in covered, that's what it's for.
Motion to approve the superintendent to take care of the year-end budget amendments and protect the entire district.
You're inferior of the district.
Do you need another motion for that?
I like that.
That was going to fuck you, ruin it for me.
I will take that as an appropriate motion. Just look for a second.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Move the second to.
We'll get you a cake.
Authorize the superintendent to approve the end of year budget amendments, if any, any additional discussion?
I'll hold there for a second.
I opposed. Motion carries six zero.
Was going to go to Wentz Way, it was stated, but I thought that wasn't too much ridicule.
We are adjourned.
I will not be here on the main.